Welcome, welcome everyone. I call the special meeting for Bothell City Council of June 29, 2021 to order. Let's see, so. Normally, we have a meeting agenda approval, but as we are a special meeting, we will not have any changes to the agenda. So we will move directly into visitor comment.
I'm sorry, do you want me to call, roll?
Yes, please, let's start with that.
Please say yay when I call your name. Deputy Mayor Zornz. Councilmember Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember McCaw.
Here.
Councilmember McNeil.
Here.
Mayor Olson.
Here.
Councilmember Dorr. Councilmember Agnew.
Here.
All present with the exception of Deputy Mayor Zornz and Councilmember Dorr, who are absent and excused.
All right, thank you. So now we will move on to visitor comment.
Okay, so we have quite an extensive list. We received 28 written comments. 20 were in support of the fireworks ban and eight were in opposition to the fireworks ban. So all of those written comments were sent to you earlier today and all will be made part of the record. Next, I have 10 people that have signed up to speak. And so I'm going to start with Jonathan O'Conne. And if you give us a minute, we'll get them paneled in.
Laura, this is Robin, and I can't see Jonathan in the attendee list, but I do have three different folks on phone calls. None of those I recognize as Jonathan's phone number. But Jonathan, if you're on the line and you can use the raise hand feature, will you let us know so we can panel you in? I'm not, I'm not seeing him. So how about we move on to Andrew because Andrew's here?
Yep, we will move on to Andrew and circle back to Jonathan at the end. So next we have Andrew Nelson.
Hello there.
Hi, Andrew. Go ahead when you're ready and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Great, thank you. Well, hello, city councilors. First off, thanks for being here. I'd like to speak in favor of the emergency fireworks ban this year. This Sunday, the 4th, it's supposed to be about 85 degrees and pretty humid out there. I fear that if fireworks are allowed, we'll have more fires, property damage between emergencies than in the years past. You know, I'd also like to see if this passes, this emergency ban passes more enforcement of this law. I think in years past, the police department, like Ken said, they give out warnings. And I thought that's a great philosophy. I think that was great. But now probably, in my opinion, you know, we need to do a bit more enforcement. But I do think that warnings at the time is the right decision. You know, I'd like to see this ban pass today. I think the, you know, the environment, our pets, our property, and I personally would thank you. I think that we also, you know, when we have the money or time, it'd be great to have a public fireworks show as an alternative, you know, professional kind of show. But anyways, thank you guys for letting me talk and I appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list, we have Mike Carrigan. Mike, go ahead whenever you're ready, have three minutes. Mike, if you can unmute your, your mic, please.
Okay, great, can you hear me?
Yep, there you go, you got three.
Sorry about that, everybody. First of all, I just want to say thanks for letting me have the time to speak here. I'm a big fan of nominating the city of Bothell. Councilman Agnew, I voted for you. Just a overall big fan of where we live here. I grew up in San Amish, not too far down the 405, and I grew up lighting off fireworks with my dad. It was something we took a lot of pleasure in and moved out to Bothell in 2012 to set and raise my family up here. I think one thing that Andrew missed in that last testimony was that there isn't enough time to have a fireworks show and that there's a lot of people who have made plans on this. There's a lot of people that rely on this, that, you know, took the short end of the stick with COVID, aren't making enough money and really are counting on this time to provide for their families. So I think of those people. I'm very active in the community. I support small business. I'm always out taking my family out. I got two little kids, going to restaurants. It's not always convenient, but I do take pride in that in our community. And I feel like this is our last chance to come together. And I think we're all prepared to not have fireworks next year and going forward the rest of our lives. And this feels a little forced to me with not enough time to really prepare people for this. And that's my personal opinion. I can almost guarantee others have differing opinions. But again, I'm thankful to be a resident of this city. I'm proud of our police force. I'm proud of our, our firemen and women and just wanted to make sure that, you know, people know there's another side of this that's beyond what's at surface here.
All right, thank you so much. Next, we have Brian Case. Brian, whenever you're ready, please unmute your mic and you can begin.
All right. See me, I told. Okay, thank you, council, for giving me the time to speak tonight. My name's Brian Case. I'm here to speak against the ban on fireworks this year. I've been a resident of Bothell since 2014 and I put on an annual safe and sane fireworks show for my neighborhood that so many families and children's, children in the neighborhood love. I don't want to have to make the disappointing phone call to everybody this year and say it's not happening. This is came on very suddenly. As of last night, I understand fireworks are banned in 2022 and beyond. And, you know, that was the, the will of the council and it was done through, through a democratic process and I can live with that. But this seems forced and rushed. Three points about why this ban this year should not occur. One, it's illegal. I'm a lawyer and I'm aware that there is a RCW, a statute that says any ordinance adopted by a city that is more restrictive than state law shall have an effective date no sooner than one year after its adoption. So there's a one-year waiting period. The council is aware of this. That's why the council voted this year to ban fireworks in 2022. There has to be a one-year waiting period. Banning fireworks this year now for this year violates that one-year waiting period and that RCW statute that the council is well aware of. The second reason why this ban should not occur this year is the Bothell municipal code provision that's being invoked says there must be an emergency situation. There is no emergency situation right now. There's no fires occurring right now. Yes, it was hot the last couple of days. By the time the 4th of July rolls around, it'll be in the mid 80s, normal typical weather for this time of year. Last year in 2020, it rained on June 15, 2020 and did not rain at any time up until the 4th of July. These emergency powers weren't invoked then. In fact, these emergency powers have never been invoked since this statute was in place in 2016. In fact, in 2015, it was 92 degrees on the 4th of July. It wasn't an emergency then. It's going to be cooler this Sunday. The other thing I'll say too is that there must be under the statute, a reasonable and articulable belief of hazardous conditions that exist where the sale and use of fireworks poses a severe wildland urban interface fire hazard, increasing risk and/or threatening public safety. I've yet to hear what that is. In fact, I don't know what it is. I don't see anything going on right now in the city of Bothell that certainly rises to that level. And third point is the practical side of this. We should not forget that this banning fireworks was put up to the citizens to vote in 2016 to ban fireworks and 54% of the.
Thank you, Mr. Case, your time, your time is up, Mr. Case, thank you. Next, we have, sorry.
Can I have?
I don't know, it's not going off.
At the end, Ms. Hathaway.
I'm sorry, your time is up. Next, we have Michael Mulher. Michael, go ahead when you're ready, have three minutes.
Thank you, council. My name is Michael Mulher and I'm a rising sophomore at Inglemore. I've lived here since 2010 and every year, my neighborhood gathers around 4th of July displays. I think as COVID ends and the restrictions lift, it's even more important to have that sense of community, especially around people who might not have seen each other for up to a year, a year and a half. Particularly as 4th of July parades have been canceled in some places, I think having those fireworks is particularly useful since most people haven't seen, haven't done anything fun for 4th of July in a year or two years. Furthermore, the point is often made that people's pets are negatively affected by 4th of July displays, but as a pet owner myself, I can confirm that it doesn't really do any harm. They just kind of chill out during it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Cameron Chapman.
Hi there.
Go ahead, Cameron.
I just want to do a voice, my support for the banning this year of the fireworks. I agree with the sentiment that pets, those with PTSD, there's a lot of things that can go into why fireworks just aren't really necessary in our city. And I think, including fire as well. But I mean, to make a very long point short, it's not necessary and it's only going to be a problem. So I think it's a good idea to go forward with the ban now ahead of time, especially now that we saw very high temperatures and it's going to be a very dangerous fire risk. It's just not worth it, in my opinion. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Hillary Sanders.
Laura, this is Robin. I can't find Hillary. Again, I've got three phone numbers that I don't recognize, but if, oh, they just raised their hand, I'll go.
Okay, great, thank you.
There we go.
Hillary, you're muted, so go ahead, there you go.
Hi there, I hope you can hear me.
Yep, we can, go ahead.
Oh, hello, my name is Hillary Sanders. Thank you for being here, all of you. I am a resident of Bothell and I just want to say that I wholeheartedly support this ban. I think fireworks impact people in many ways. Each July 4th, I think about those in our community who are impacted the most, people with PTSD, neurodiverse people, people with pets, people with asthma or the respiratory conditions, people with infants and more. I also live next to Shelton View Forest, which is a beautiful urban green space that community members in Bothell are working to preserve. And every year, I worry about the fire danger. I worry about the risks that fireworks pose to wildlife that we share our communities with. The plastic and chemical pollution from fireworks debris washes into our local streams, endangering fish and waterfowl. And then in addition to that, the noise and smells associated with fireworks can cause birds and other wildlife to panic and flee, potentially leading to their injury or death. And we see that fireworks induce anxiety in our own pets and just keeping in mind that wild animals don't have any place to hide. I just want to note too, that Bothell is the only city in the area that has not already banned fireworks completely. So I found that Briar, Edmonds, Everett, Kenmore, Kirkland, Lake Forest Park, Lynnwood, Marysville, Mill Creek, Montlake Terrace, Muckelteo, Redmond, Shoreline, Seattle, Woodenville, and unincorporated King and Southwest Snohomish Counties all have bans, which I think is pretty astounding that we were still going forward with fireworks this year. I've seen the aftermath of fireworks usage in Bothell year after year, littered streets, the smog, missing pets. And several years ago, the slides at Shelton View Elementary were destroyed when someone was using them as a platform for their fireworks. In 2020, the Washington State Fire Marshal's Office received 597 reports of fireworks-related incidents from hospitals, clinics, and fire agencies. Of those 597 reported incidents, there were 237 injuries and 360 fires that occurred in Washington State. And most of those occurred, occurred on or around the 4th. And with many people feeling it is safer to gather for barbecues and parties this year, I think those numbers are likely to be greater. I'd like us to put the community or the safety of our community first this year, especially during a severe drought year. On a personal note, I've been experiencing a great deal of climate anxiety over the last few weeks. Wildfire season is already in full swing. We're having this record-breaking heat wave and adding to that the danger that fireworks pose. I guess I would just implore each of you to consider how fireworks threaten our community and vote tonight in favor of this ban.
Thank you, Hillary, your time is up, I appreciate it. Next on the list, we have David Halbouwitz. Go ahead, David.
Hi, I'm David Halbouwitz and this is Freddie the Basset. Two and a half years ago, Freddie moved here to live with me. And I want you to know that we both support this ban and that we make it. When he moved here, he moved here from Tampa, Florida. So this dog slept through the most violent thunderstorms. He also never wanders from home, even if he's let loose in the front yard. But last year, in the days leading up to the 4th of July, people started firing off fireworks. Freddie actually ran out of the house, broke out of the backyard fence and ran away several times. Each time, neighbors helped me find him and bring him back. Finally, on the afternoon of the 4th, it became too much. Even when I put him in the bathroom and closed the door and turned out the lights, his heart was racing and he was panting uncontrollably. He has excellent hearing and there is no way to place him somewhere that he could not be bothered by this. He was terrorized and there was nothing I could do. As a last resort, I loaded him in my truck, we drove up to Stevens Pass and camped on a forest road to get away from the noise. This year, I can't do that. Freddie's hind legs are paralyzed from a herniated disc. He had spinal surgery a few weeks ago and now we're doing physical therapy. It's unfair to expect him to go through that again here in our own home, especially now with his condition. The noise of the fireworks could actually kill him. It's also stressful on me knowing that I can't do anything for him. Many pet owners spend lots of money getting sedatives from their veterinarians, drugging their dogs, and that is not an option for me. In fact, veterinarians prescribe these medications all over the place because of the harm that these fireworks are creating. And something else I learned from last year's fireworks is that soldiers with PTSD often have the exact same reaction as Freddie did, but many of them are too proud and too patriotic to tell people how it affects them. We need to be more sensitive to the needs of our vets, our pets, and our community. Please do enforce this ban. We would appreciate it and Freddie the Basset especially would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Stacy Valenzuela, I can't say it, I'm sorry. Valenzuela.
Valenzuela.
Sorry, Stacy, sorry if I butchered that, but go ahead, you have three minutes.
That's okay. Thank you for the opportunity. Seems what we hear most is that people love setting off their own fireworks and that the sales help so many charities, but at what cost? Year after year, fireworks, both illegal and safe and sane, have caused multiple fires, many on dry areas, but also on homes of neighbors. They also cause multiple injuries. Some illegal fireworks are actually closer to low-grade explosives.
Yeah. I'm trying to turn it on.
I'm sorry, Rosemary.
The concern of fireworks, starting a fire, to those residents not participating is too high. The blasts also cause a lot of stress to veterans, residents suffering from PTSD or anxiety, as well as too many animals, both domestic and wild. If most residents used, use was in a controlled, safe, cleared area and only blasted a few fireworks for a few hours safely on the 4th of July, possibly on a park and ride lot or other open lot, others might be able to cope with the stress. The blast continued days before and days after the 4th at all hours. Only professional techno shows preferred close to the water and supervised with fire crews available for perhaps that will continue, should be allowed. The firemen are also having to fight several fires right now. So that is also a cause for concern. If banned, any use or distribution should carry a high fine. Please consider following the outlined cities and King County and ban fireworks for the safety of all residents, businesses, animals, and community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list, I have Brad Sobrinsky. Brad, you're muted, but once you unmute, go ahead and you have three minutes.
Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'm against this ban and I help run shock and awe fireworks. You know, all this testimony that I've heard to this point, a lot of it has nothing really to do with, with, with what you're up against now. And you've already got, my understanding is that Bothell's banned fireworks next year. And so that's the legal way that they have to close them out for next year. And so that's, that's the legality. And I think it was Bruce, Brian Case that talked about legality. And I, what I've experienced in our fireworks sales is that when we had the much longer drought in 2015, and there was talk back then of banning fireworks, people didn't buy fireworks. They cut down, they were responsible and with sales were down at least 30%. And so I would request that you would give people the benefit of the doubt and trust them in their ability to self-manage and live within the law, the legality of the law. And you've got them banned for a year from now. And I don't think, I question with the legality of it. As far as nonprofits, I mean, we, we've got $30,000 invested in fireworks that are for the city of Bothell stands that we have. And so that's going to, that's a puts these nonprofits in a real pinch. And so I'd appreciate if you would consider, consider that and trust people's responsibility and in this, let me see if I had something on a note. No, that's good enough. Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm gonna, that's the last person I have on my signup list, but I'm going to go back to Jonathan O'Conne, see if he's, he's with us yet.
Laura, I don't see a Jonathan. There's one, two, three, four phone numbers, so there's four callers, but their numbers don't, aren't as the same that Jonathan provided me. So, oh, I've got someone named Jesse raising their hand, let's give them a try and see if that's him. If not, that's the last, so we could let Jesse speak if we'd like to.
Hi there, my name is Jesse Sheldon, I'm not Jonathan, so sorry that you thought that I was, but I didn't have a chance to register earlier today.
Okay, go ahead, you have three minutes. Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, great, thank you. Once again, my name is Jesse Sheldon, I'm resident of Bothell. I am against the use of this emergency ban. Not even necessarily that I'm against the ban of fireworks, but in the sense that this was given a 24-hour notice a week ahead of the 4th of July. A lot of business owners, just like the gentleman who spoke before me, have money invested in this, they've planned their life around it. And to use an emergency ban to get this passed when that they're already going to be illegal next year, I think is, I think is wrong. And so that's my stance on that. Once again, it's not even about the ban of fireworks as a whole. I understand that they have a lot of, there's disagreements about their effect on veterans and pets, but I think specifically the council's use of an emergency proclamation to make this happen, I'm against that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have on the list, well, somebody raised their hand, Tom Case. So we'll get them. Tom, you're muted, go ahead and unmute and then you'll have three minutes.
Hello, everyone, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I did say a bit of a written comment earlier, but I just also want to offer my opinion that the, I believe that the ban is not a wise thing to do. It's something which I believe is part of our rights as citizens, as Americans, and also the fact that, you know, I've lived in the Pacific Northwest for 34 years and we have faced many challenges weather-wise over those years. And I don't think that three days worth of hot temperatures, particularly these last three days, and when looking at the climate conditions that are coming up, are not unfavorable in any way, shape, or form to this, that there is no reason for this emergency ban that the council is now undertaking. And so with that, I would like to, to say that, again, I ask you, I implore you to please keep this last event for us as citizens and, you know, next year it's over and on we go. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the last person I show on the list. If anybody else in the audience would like to speak, please use the raise your hand function. Mr. Brian Case, I see your hand up, but you've already had your three minutes, so. Next, I have Triana, go ahead and panel her in.
Can you hear me?
Good evening, go ahead, we can hear you.
Thank you. So my family runs one of your stands in Bothell. Our house is in shambles now as we're packing up our trucks to drive tonight to get started. Your law states that we can start selling after Inspector comes at noon tomorrow. We have three and a half, I mean, on the first, we have three and a half days to sell. We have already spent thousands of dollars to prepare for this. This is the only way we can send our kids to private school and for their sports, for their activities and to be told after we have already spent all this money that not only do we not get to do this work, you, I cannot even begin to tell you, the concept of not having this stand is devastating for our family. And I need you to know what you are deciding to do in the, in the name that it's really hot, because from what I heard, tomorrow it's supposed to be 66 degrees in the morning when I am waking up to drive over to Bothell. I need you to really understand what you are doing to our family, to families like ours, and all the kids that we have coming to work that are just trying to pay their tuition, their school loans, their college loans, because they don't want any loans from the government, they just want to earn it themselves. You are taking away our ability to do that. We just want to be proud of our country and work. We are willing to work, just please allow us to do this and not use the last three days being hot as an excuse to take that away from us. Thank you very much for listening, I really appreciate that.
Thank you. Next, we have Dorothy. Thank you. Next we have Dorothy.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, please.
Okay, well, my family and I moved to Bothell in 1989. We've enjoyed setting off fireworks in the little sport court in our development across from our home. In recent years, we've had problems late at night with people who don't live in our neighborhood bringing in what are obviously illegal fireworks, setting them off, and leaving litter and liquor bottles behind them. Not last year, but the year before, they actually set fire to my neighbor's lawn. I think the weather conditions are making any kind of fireworks use very dangerous. And people can have great intentions, but the consequences will soon get beyond them. I also think we need to consider that as a jurisdiction permitting fireworks use surrounded by jurisdictions that do not, that we're going to have people from outside of Bothell coming in to set off fireworks, who are not part of the community and may not take as much care of our community as the people who already live here. I would certainly love to go see the big fireworks show with everybody else, but sadly, I have to stay home and play fire marshal. Please consider in this climate emergency banning fireworks and keeping our community safe. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next I have Cameron.
I didn't know if I could speak.
Oh, no, I'm sorry you can't. Sorry, I didn't realize you would say Cameron. So you've already had your three minutes. So, thank you. Is anybody else in the audience wishes to speak? Please raise your hand. Again, Mr. Brian Case, you had your three minutes. I am not seeing anybody else at this time, Mayor Olson. So I believe that will be the end of our visitor comment.
All right, thank you. All right, our item for the evening is the consideration of an emergency ban on the sale and use of fireworks for 2021. So I will turn it over to our interim city manager, Aaron Lenhart, to start.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you know, the purpose of tonight's special meeting is to recommend that the city council issue a citywide temporary order prohibiting the sale, possession, and use of consumer fireworks for 2021. This recommendation is not made lightly. It is based on belief that hazardous conditions exist that threaten public safety. As required by the Bothell Municipal Code, I consulted with the fire chief and police chief as well as the fire marshal before recommending this action. I would like to have Fire Marshal Butch Noble discuss the basis of our recommendation.
Thank you, interim city manager Lenhart, and good evening, Mayor and Council. My role tonight is to provide you with some climate science. One of the reasons we're making, or we made our decision has been referenced this evening is the pretty extreme weather we've been experiencing. But I will dive just a little bit into the science that the firefighters use when we make these decisions, whether it's a burn ban or fireworks ban. We rely on data that's, or I'm sorry, data that's provided to us by the Northwest Coordination Center. And there's really two things that they monitor. And that is something called ERC, which is potential burn energy fuels on the ground. And the second thing that they look at is moisture in that fuel. And that's called 100-hour fuels or F-100. As I look at the data that's been provided by by the Northwest Coordination Center, the numbers are pretty astounding. And I can tell you that this week, we've been averaging numbers. The ERC are potential, potential energy numbers. We've been averaging 42, 44, 45, and these are daily numbers. I think that yesterday's number was almost 50. These are really high numbers. The average number for June 29th historical is 13. And we're in the 40s and 50s. We're over the 95th percentile on that number. So that's a little startling for us. The second metric we look at would be the F-100 or the moisture levels in the fuel. And these are real, two very contributing factors when we consider, like I said, burn bans and potential for wildland urban or interface, wildland interface fires. Historically, the mean in the F-100 number is 18. Today's number was 42. Yesterday's was 44. And looking forward, the prediction for the week is all in the 40s. So really, if you were to chart these two numbers, you'd see them getting further apart as you were, if you were to go down the x-axis. We like to see these numbers getting closer together or at least staying parallel. They're getting further apart as the moisture levels go down and the energy level goes up. Essentially, that's a recipe for disaster. So as we predict forward to July 4th, they are predicting another number in the 40s on Sunday and another, I think, 10 for the moisture level. And again, remember the mean is 18 for the Fourth of July. So I just wanted to offer up that data. In addition, the 14-day forecast has absolutely zero participation or precipitation involved. So any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Butch. So the Chief Crone, Chief Suberlich, and Chief Noble and I, as well as the city attorney, are available for any questions that council has, and we will leave it to you.
Any questions?
Hello, sorry, Mayor. My video's not working, but I do have one question.
All right, Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you. I'm just so disappointed by hearing all the testimony. I know what impact this is on businesses. But, but what I want to be sure of, and I've talked to our assistant city manager about this, I want to be sure that people know that this ban will take place, that we put rights, the signage out that that people will know, because that's the biggest issue. We can't do it all by social media. But here's my question. Is there any way for us to help these small businesses? Is there any money coming down from the federal government for all of the stimulus money? Is there anything to help them?
I don't, I can't answer the question. I don't know if we can use that type of money. I would hazard a guess not. However, we can look to see what we can do. I don't think that there's any funding available.
I know. That would be important, because I realize they've invested their money. And probably, you know, this decision we make tonight will impact them financially. So I'm hoping maybe, at least if you could look at that, please, and see if there's any way in the funds that we're going to get the impact funds for, if we could do something to help them.
Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question for the interim city attorney. This is what we're discussing tonight. This isn't an ideological, right, issue, correct? Like, this isn't like, what do we think Bothell should do? This is a public safety issue, right?
Did you mean the interim city manager or the?
What did I say? Did I say interim city attorney?
You did.
Oh, sorry. I meant interim city manager.
Okay.
Yes, council member, this is, this recommendation is purely based on the data from the fire department as the fire marshal described. It's not ideological in nature.
Thank you. I, I mean, it's no secret that ideologically I was very in favor of a permanent ban for fireworks. And I feel no enthusiasm about this whatsoever. This is not, I appreciate what you said, it's not an ideological issue. It has nothing to do with pets, veterans with PTSD, garbage, climate pollution, my kids not being able to sleep at night, any of that. It's purely because, like, it's sort of a powder keg around here right now, because it is exceptionally historically dry. And if we went forward and something tragic happened, that weighs heavily on me, and I know it does staff as well. So I, thank you, Butch. I had some questions written down during your presentation, and you answered all of them. So I appreciate that.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. It was hard for me to get my mute button pushed there. First and foremost, I just want to thank the community for coming out and speaking to us tonight. It was amazing to hear from all of the speakers. It was amazing to hear from our community on what's important to them and the things that affect them. And we heard from both sides, both pro and for and against the ban. And all valid points that I think all of us take serious. So I just wanted to thank the community for speaking to us. I do have a couple of questions surrounding the ban itself. One is, what is, what is the actual criteria for the emergency ban? Is it based solely on public safety?
Paul, do you want to help weigh in? Or I can read the language from the DMC?
If you have it available, that's what I was actually in the process of looking up.
Okay. The recommendation from the city manager must meet stringent criteria and be based on a reasonable and articulable belief that hazardous conditions exist where the sale and use of consumer fireworks poses a severe wildland urban interface fire hazard, increasing risk and/or threatening public safety.
And do we feel that we've met all of that criteria?
Yes, we do.
Okay. And for the, somebody had spoke about the 2015 drought. Did we have a ban in 2015?
We did not. And that, I'm sorry, interim city manager, would you like to answer that?
No, please.
Sorry. So it was in response to the 2015 drought that council passed the amendment to the code that then allowed for an emergency ban. Prior to 2015, this was not part of our code, but that was the impetus for council adopting. I believe it was ordinance 2190 in 2016, too, because it was so concerning at that time. And I believe the governor at that point indicated that he didn't have the ability to enact a statewide ban. And so that was because, so based on all of those factors, the council put that measure into place so that if conditions like those in 2015 were once again present, there would be a course of action that council could take.
And according to the statistics that we just heard, where are we in comparison to 2015 to today?
Chief Noble or Crone, can you address that?
I don't have those figures.
Councilmember McNeil, I don't, I didn't look all the way back to 2015. I did find the fire marshal Frank Shasky's original presentation to council, but he didn't have any statistics accompanying that presentation.
And then the, if we, if we ban, if I'm understanding this correctly, if we ban the sale and the use, that means that the fireworks stands that are set up currently will not be able to start to sell them on the days they're allowed to sell. Is that, am I understanding that correctly? Even though they've permitted and everything?
That is correct.
Okay. And so that would only be for the fireworks stands that are located in the city of Bothell. It will no longer be allowed to sell in the city of Bothell, correct?
That is correct. They would, if the emergency ban goes into effect, it would be illegal to sell, possess, or use any consumer fireworks.
Okay, so if, if somebody possesses fireworks from last year that were legal, this year they're illegal?
Correct.
Okay. And is there a method, method for discharging those illegal fireworks?
That would fall under use. And if the emergency ban is put into effect, you would also not be able to use those fireworks.
Okay. But if you possess them, you're in trouble?
That would be illegal. It would be a matter of, basically, if you don't, if you don't put them out in the front yard, we're not going to know you have them. I don't want to encourage anyone to say less.
Okay, thank you. And then if we ban the sale and use of fireworks in Bothell, does that have an impact on the sale and use or the sale of fireworks outside of the city of Bothell, such as reservations?
It would not.
So if we ban them and somebody already has gone to or goes to and buys them in places where they can buy them, regardless if they're illegal or legal or illegal, there's still the potential for them to light those off?
Correct. Illegally. So if they bought them for instance at Boom City and brought them back into the city of Bothell, the possession of those fireworks would be illegal if the emergency ban passes. And if they were to detonate or discharge those fireworks, even if they were purchased outside of the city limits, if they were to use them within the city limits, that usage would also be illegal if the emergency ban goes into effect.
At you. If there's no ban, if I'm understanding, our last conversation, those fireworks from the reservation are still illegal, correct?
It depends on the type of firework. I think Fire Marshal Noble can speak more to that. But based on the classification of fireworks, some of the fireworks that are sold at the reservation are currently otherwise legal in Bothell at this moment. It's not a blanket that anything purchased on a reservation is necessarily illegal.
So they're safe and sane that are sold at reservations? Or outside the city?
I can't, I don't know what's sold there. I've been there in the past, but I don't understand the classification of fireworks enough to be able to opine as to whether or not what is there today would classify as safe and sane or legal within the city.
Okay. And then there was a mention of a burn ban. Is there a, is there a burn ban statewide or a county burn ban in effect right now?
There is a, it depends on where you look, Councilmember McNeil. Bellevue implemented a burn ban, stage two, which is your backyard legal, generally legal fire pits. We try to initiate these bans unilaterally. However, they implemented theirs yesterday. And there's a good chance the rest of the local municipalities will be banning as well. We haven't made that decision yet. Again, we're basing it on science. One of the main factors that's keeping us from making that leap would be the wind. There just isn't any, and that's a huge consideration when it comes to burn bans. So there's, we're just kind of on the edge right now, so to speak.
Okay. That's all my questions. I really appreciate everybody taking the time to answer them. And I do appreciate the robust discussion on this.
Mr. Mayor, sorry.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you. So first of all, and I might have missed it, and you might have talked about it, and I'm sorry if I did, but the penalty. So if someone lets off fireworks and we send out the firemen or the policemen, what is the penalty for that?
City attorney, do you have that information?
Sorry, I do. Let me pull it up. So that's under. So that's under BMC 837 230. Any person violating any provision of this chapter shall, upon a finding by a court of competent jurisdiction that such violation was committed, be subject to the imposition of a fine and/or imprisonment as follows. There are sections A, B, C, D, and E. So essentially, the minimum would be 90 days and $1,000 fine. For the others, those looks like they are, so A and E would be simple misdemeanors. Violations under sections B, C, and D would be gross misdemeanors, which is a maximum penalty of 364 days in jail and a $5,000 fine.
So let me ask you this question, Paul. If they were not aware of the ban, then how does all of that come into play?
Yeah, unfortunately, the ignorance of the law doesn't excuse the behavior, that what that would likely look like if someone were to have been caught with fireworks or using them illegally, and they were investigated by the police, if they were then sent to this, the prosecutor's office, if they were charged, if it then went to trial, and even if they entered into a plea, it's then up to the judge to do the sentencing. And I have little, no doubt, actually, I have no doubt the Judge Rosanna would take into account the fact that this was done on an emergency basis when imposing any sort of sentence.
I appreciate that. I think that's important, because there are some people that just are not going to know. No matter how, how hard we try to reach them, and, and so, yes, I think that's important, that a judge would make that final decision. And again, I'm going to go back to, my only thing is this. I, I am, I understand these are small businesses, they're going to lose a lot of dollars, because they invested already in their, in what they're going to sell. So if you could please, interim city manager Aaron, look to see if there's any stimulus dollars that might be available to them for their loss.
Councilmember, our Economic Development Manager weighed in that if fireworks businesses have insurance, there's a possibility that it would cover some of their losses, just as something from, from Jeanie Ash.
Well, that's why we hired her. Thank you.
So Paul, I think one of our visitor comments, public comments, made mention of that this may be illegal the way that we're doing or going about this?
Yeah, I strongly disagree with that assertion. I've also consulted with outside council and with our deputy city attorney, and the three of us believe that this is a legal course of action.
Great. I just wanted clarification on that. Anyone else with questions or comments? All right, I'm not seeing any. Would anyone like to make a motion towards the recommended action? Councilmember Agnew?
I move the recommended action.
Councilmember Thompson?
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Agnew to approve the resolution enacting an emergency ban on sale, possession, and use of the fireworks for 2021, with a second by Councilmember Thompson. Any discussion on this item? Councilmember Agnew?
You know, I listened to some of the compelling arguments, two and four, about this, and some of it, I totally agree with. But to say that it's not been hot in the Seattle area is absurd, where we've never had three days of 100-degree temperature, ever. I mean, we've only had five days before this. Now we've had eight. We haven't had any precipitation in quite a while, so it's bone dry out there. You know, there's been discussion about veterans and dogs, and, you know, all I can speak to is about me. And I'm a veteran, I'm a combat veteran, served 50 years ago, actually, this year. And if a big firework goes off, I, my heart starts racing, I work for it, I, I'm not comfortable with it, I don't like it. You know, some animals, they're leery of it, some animals, they just roll over and just scratch their ear. But it affects everybody. I think with the tinderbox that we have right now, we would be remiss if we didn't do this for the safety of our citizens. Thank you.
Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, and I thank Councilmember Agnew for his, his comments, and I stand with him and those with animals and PTSD who struggle with that, and I do support our veterans. The thing that I'm struggling with is that, and, and the reason that I'm not going to support this motion is because I believe wholeheartedly that banning this, this close to the 4th of July, is, is not going to get out to our community in full, and there's going to be those that come into our community and continue to light fireworks off, legal or illegal fireworks. And I struggle with enacting a ban that is going to take away from members of our community and harm members of our community, and us not have complete control of it. So I do support both sides of this. I struggle with it, but I think I must ensure that I follow my heart and, and what I believe to be that, that individuals will continue, regardless of this ban, to light off fireworks, not only in the city of Bothell, but surrounding cities that are illegal and have banned fireworks. So I will not be supporting this, but I do support all members of my community. But I just wanted to ensure that I had the opportunity to speak about that.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember McAuliffe?
Thank you. And this is a very difficult decision, because we're impacting small businesses, and we're impacting our celebration of the 4th of July. And this is really hard for me, because all my career, I have done the parade for nine years and the celebration, and we used to have fireworks in the city of Bothell, and we don't have any of it anymore. So how do we celebrate the 4th of July in the future? We need to design that. So if I vote against this today, my vote will be because, first of all, I'm concerned about the small businesses we're going to impact, and second of all, I'm concerned that we, as a city, are not celebrating the 4th of July. So I want a big fireworks show next year, where we ban all fireworks, and I'll be voting no tonight.
All right, I'll say that I'll be in support of this strictly for the data that we have been presented tonight. I do believe that we have been experiencing some, experiencing some very unusual, unprecedented And I think just based on, on that alone, I'll be supporting this. I agree with the other council members that the businesses that we have that are selling within our city, this is an impact to us, and I share if, if there's something that we can do, whether it's supporting them, reaching out to them, or just letting the communities know of what they, who they are, I think that would be beneficial. But the, the potential for loss of property, impact to, impact to damage, or impact of people's homes, and just the potential for injury and loss of life is a lot greater this year, so.
Mayor Olson, please note that Councilmember Door has just joined us. So we now have six present.
Councilmember Door?
Hello?
I'll just bring you up to speed. We had a motion by Councilmember Agnew to, for the recommended action to approve the resolution enacting an emergency ban on sale, possession, and use of the fireworks for 2021, with Councilmember Thompson seconding that motion. And we are in discussion of that motion at the moment.
Well, I should probably speak then, since I am. Sorry, I joined late. I'm on vacation in South Carolina, but I think we should probably ban them, given the high temperatures of the last week and the hazard that comes with that. And so I will be voting for this motion.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, City Clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
No.
Councilmember McNeil?
No.
Mayor Olson?
Yes.
Councilmember Door?
Yes.
Councilmember Agnew?
Yes.
Passes 4 to 2 with Councilmember McAuliffe and Councilmember McNeil on the negative, and Deputy Mayor Zorn Thapson unexcused.
All right, thank you, everyone, for that. So that was our single item for the evening.
I believe the next agenda item is adjourned.
Yes, it is. I would agree with that, so.
In motion, Mayor?
And we do not. We just moved to adjournment. So thank you, everyone, for making time for this special meeting. We are adjourned.
Thank you.